Everybody. Apparently Brian always has a time to save for the day to make sure you have John Watson when each seat comes in. Just a few basic rules. We're gonna ask you questions. The questions all came from you guys. And each candidate gets two minutes to answer the question. And they mentioned somebody else by name. My reference of that person gives you a chance to respond. And the school is here to, uh, they're gonna take it for us. And we thank them for that. And they want us to tell you that, like us, their participation does not represent any kind of endorsement. They're just here to help the community. Thank you very much, Joe and the school for that. And that's pretty much it. We'll ask the questions, you know, answer them, don't argue issue. And we've got about 20 questions. We think in the last two hours, we may run out of time. Question number one, we'll start with the mayor, just go over it. Tell us about yourself and what you've done in the past, what you'd like to do, and your position if you elect.
I'm John Watson. I've been your mayor for many years, over 20. Um, I am a retired postmaster. My wife and I have a rental business and I rebuild little houses. Joe helps me once in a while. I'm very excited to, first off, thank you all for taking the time to come to one of these. It takes a lot of time out of your day, but not near as much time as it would take if you were actually running for one of these positions. In the future, a bit, we have a lot of things that we have to deal with. In the next two years, there are many things that we will be dealing with that a lot of you probably won't even, at this point in time, recognize that there's a need. One of those would be the infrastructure of our sewer system, increase in our water rates possibly, increase in the sewer system possibly. Uh, we're gonna do East Third Street, a big street construction, $1.6 million. That'll be going on next year. And we'll be looking at the infiltration, uh, in a new system and how to avoid all of the infiltration into our sewer system when it rains. Those are just a small amount of the things that we'll be looking into in the next two years. And whomever you elect will be very busy for the next two years. Uh, once again, thank you all for taking the time and have a good night.
My name is Nathan Hesse and I am currently the part owner in Hesse Properties in Vinton here. Uh, we, my brother and I own it. I grew up in Vinton, lived here pretty much my whole life. Stayed for about 10 years when I went to college and traveled Midwest a little bit with my wife. Um, I, as I said, currently own Hesse Properties with my brother. I've had a desire to be a part of the community in a lot of different ways. When I came back to Vinton, uh, first job I had was the director of Vinton Unlimited. I spent about five years as the director of Vinton Unlimited. Had a great opportunity to meet a lot of people throughout the community, get involved in economic development, get to know business owners and what business owners expect and the struggles that they go through. I've had the opportunity as a small business owner to not only listen to those concerns and be a part of that, but actually have those same concerns as myself. So, um, I look forward to having the opportunity. I'd love to represent for work on the city council and see what we can do about investing in the future of Vinton. There's a lot of opportunities, as John said, coming up. I don't have all the technical background that John just kinda talked about, but I'm excited to learn about it and figure out how I can get in and get more involved in the community and in this role as representative on the city council.
My name is Ted Jessen. Um, I've lived in Vinton for 21 years. Um, I currently run and operate Ted Jessen Construction. I've been in the business for 10 years. Um, I've enjoyed serving the community in that capacity. My average drag time's about five, 10 minutes. So, I stay pretty much in town, so I've got to know a lot of the public. And I'd really like to just give back to what, um, the community has given me. And hopefully, um, with any of the concerns and the things that the people have talked to me about, hopefully we can address some of these and continue with what John said, with what's coming up with sewer and the water. Um, thank you very much.
I'm Tammy Stark. I'm a 24-year resident of Vinton. I got involved, interested in city council when I was with Vinton Unlimited and decided to take it a step further and run for council. I like being involved. I like being able to be a liaison for constituents and the council and Chris Ward and our city employees. Um, I'm also a real estate agent, so I do see some of the needs that we are addressing as an active council. And I wanna just continue with that and keep us on the right path in the new world.
I'm Ted Parter. Uh, I've been on council for just a little over a year. I was actually appointed to council, um, and then decided to run again for a third ward. Uh, I work for Benton County Conservation. Um, it's something I'm very passionate about. Um, and we have kind of a new process coming up. Uh, we're working on a watershed management authority. Um, and the council, the mayor, and the city administrator, everybody's coming together on this. And it's gonna be a joint task force with a lot of other counties and a lot of other cities. Um, and just to reiterate on, uh, the mayor's comments about the stormwater runoff, um, with this watershed management authority, right now we stand a very good chance of actually getting quite a few million dollars for the city as that can help mitigate some of these problems. And that's something that I am going to continue to work on as I'm on council, so.
My name's Chris Bevel. I've lived here all my life. I've been in the city for four years. I work at Aquaball Collins in Cedar Rapids. Uh, funny little story. Four years ago, um, somebody came up and said, "I'm gonna nominate you for city council." Happened to win by a vote of four to, four to two, I think it was. Um, I don't know what, I didn't know what to give him to, but, uh, for the four years I've been here, I've had great times serving all these people. And as, as the years have gone by, I've learned a lot and there's a lot more to come. Um, there's a lot of important decisions that we have to make in the next couple of years. Very, very important decisions. If I'm elected, so be it, I'll make the best decisions that I can make for you.
My name's Brian Poirot. I've lived here for quite a while. I'll do the best I can. Uh, I guess that's it.
I'm Bud Baker. Um, I've lived here my whole life. Um, first and foremost, I'm a husband to my beautiful wife, a toddler to my beautiful kids. I've been on council, was on council for eight years. Just enjoy it, you miss. Um, a year ago, I started to have thoughts about perhaps running for mayor. So, at that point, I need to step back from the day-to-day bustle of it and take a look at it from the outside and see what kinda changes I could make. John is correct, there's a lot of infrastructure needs gonna be coming up in this community. And what the community needs is a plan to lead that forward so we can do it responsibly and affordably for everybody in the community. And that's how Vinton has to grow, with a plan, not running from fire to fire, and putting them up. And that's what I plan on bringing up life as a mayor, so. Thank you.
Also on the ballot, our question regarding the utility and its people's fear wearing stickers and there's people back there who are a few that don't want to know. Tell us what you think about the vote about the utility and whether or not it should be under control or be. I mean, you had a second question space.
You can lock here, though.
Oh, I'm sorry. Nathan, you go first.
Okay. I've had the opportunity to be involved with, uh, the, the utility and iVinton specifically since kind of it began just a few months ago. I've had the opportunity to get involved and learn a little bit about it, uh, to go out and, and help make others aware of what iVinton is and the opportunities that are there for both, uh, our students, for our families, for the community as a whole. And what I would, what I would like to see is a yes vote from everybody. I think it's an incredible opportunity to be able to explore options and to learn more about this and what it could possibly mean for Vinton. Uh, as I understand it, it's, it's the first step in moving Vinton forward. It gives us the opportunity to not only explore what options are available, but costs to go with that. And I think those are questions that everybody has and without getting a yes vote on that first question, uh, we're kinda dead in the water. We've waited a long time for this and I don't think that Vinton can handle waiting another 10 years. The last vote was about 10 years ago. If we wait another 10 years before we can look into this again, we're gonna be so far behind. Uh, it's gonna be next for him possibly to catch up. So, I'm excited about the possibilities that exist. Uh, I'm not, uh, I, I hope that, that people will jump in and vote yes. As far as the second question, whether it should be under the utility or not, um, I think that the current utility has done an excellent job. They've got the infrastructure already set up. They know what they're doing and therefore I think that it would be a good thing to have it under that, but I'd also be open to having a separate board who can, uh, who can explore that as well and, and control the utility.
Well, um, I think that the i-vote is, iVinton vote is a very important vote for Vinton itself. Right now, Vinton has not really grown in 20 years. Our population has stayed about the same, if not has dropped just a hair. You know, we need to bring in businesses and I think that communication is a big way and a big part of that. Through internet, uh, businesses run through internet systems, businesses done through the internet. And it's just important that we can grow the town and then that will bring in people to help build our houses and, and that'll help build the infrastructure that we desperately need. And I just really think that the town in a whole will benefit from this vote. It, it just gives us a lot of options to look at. We can actually look at what can we do with our own utilities. We have a great electrical department, a great water department. We have a lot of things in-house that, like during the windstorm, with our own electricity company, if you had a land or one of these other ones, you know, you're just a blimp. You're a duck. But our own company was able to come in and take care of the town and get things moving. And that's why I also think that a vote for yes is very important. Thank you.
I feel like if we don't vote yes now, we're gonna be, as Nathan said, 10 years behind again. Um, it is important to keep up with progress. It is important to try and maybe stay ahead. Communication is a big thing. Uh, when my family comes to visit, they're, I feel like they take a step back in time just a little bit with our communication. So, I do feel that a yes vote is the way to go. And if it can be managed under our current utility, I would like to see that. Um, I would be open to whatever other options people might want to explore, but currently I would like to see it stay under the current utilities.
Um, yes, vote yes, um, but that doesn't mean that it's gonna happen either. I mean, this is just, we have to have a feasibility study done, um, you know, and hopefully we don't get out there and find out that it's not gonna be possible for the city of Vinton, whether it's for putting the infrastructure in or whatnot. But it's definitely, um, a very, very important yes vote. Um, I, I would have absolutely no issues with the current utility managing the telecommunications utility. But as Ms. Stark said, uh, if, if there's other options that would be better and better suited for the community, um, it's gonna be a learning curve for all of us. I mean, I don't think anybody in this room's ever been a part of it, so. Um, I think council's all eager right now at this, at this point to get that yes vote so we can move forward with the process.
Um, Kurt Carr came to us with this, uh, project and he's been feeding us with information, information after information, and it's been great. And I applaud him for that, for all the homework that he's done. But there's still a lot of unknowns that we don't know. Um, yes, we need to vote yes so we can proceed with this and find out what else there is to make this happen for the city of Vinton. Um, under the current city utilities, if that's, if that's the direction we need to go and it makes sense budget-wise, that's probably the direction we'll have to go. Um, but yeah, communication is huge through internet. Recently I arrived, well, we just had, we went four days without computers working. It can be done, but it's tough.
I, uh, I'm all for going ahead, keeping up with technology. I would prefer to see it kept out of people's utility bills. Um, I think those that are using it should be the ones to pay. And I don't know enough about it to go any farther until that all comes in.
Well, I'd like to commend Kurt. He has gotten everybody the same information because we've all got the same answers up here. Um, yes, it's important. Every time a new business comes to this community and they wanna say, "Hey, what you got for high-speed internet?" Say, "We got MediaCom that, you want the speed dial, look if you're disconnected? I'll give that to you first." And, uh, we need to have some reliable that's gonna make it because every time a business comes here and they do not see that we have high speed, we just gotta put it to the back burner. And that's unacceptable if we're gonna grow as a community. And there's not one person in here who has not made that call to somebody that your internet link down. True? Yeah, everybody can shake their head, "Yes." And it happens. MediaCom has my name up on the wall with a slash through it because they know me by the first name. And it's, it's a, it's a fact. And so somewhere around here, we gotta get through it. And this is the first step. Once that feasibility study gets out there, then we can see what the return on the investment's gonna be. If the numbers work, by God, we're gonna move forward and we're gonna move forward fast. And that's how it's gonna have to be, so.
I don't think I can expand one bit on all the excellent answers that all these people have given you. Um, whether we realize it or not, we are part of the international trade system. And the availability of, of more advanced technology for communication can do nothing but help us. Uh, so I agree with all of my fellow people here.
A lot of inflated issue. I tried to find out more about the council on the city website and it doesn't exist. It's there. Every page I click on says, "Page not available." What do you think a city like website should be and how do you think the city should approach getting it there?
Uh, I don't know. Um, I've been to that same website and there says, "Vinton over at Nice," but there's nothing there. I think that to have a website, it should, you know, you should be able to get to your council, know who's on your council, who's in charge of your water department, your electric department, your park department. There should be other clicks to draw into, like your park department, what activities are happening in the community that are important to your kids and to yourself. Um, a website is, is sometimes the first thing people see when they're looking at your community to come into, "The to Vinton, move to Vinton, what's in Vinton?" An empty board? That doesn't help the, the community at all. Um, I would like to see, uh, basically just a website that doesn't have to be very elaborate, but it needs to be informative. It needs to let people know exactly what services we have and how to contact people in those services. Thank you.
I was on that website today, not for very long because there wasn't anything there to see. Um, I agree with Ted. If somebody's coming to Vinton, whether it be just to pass through, whether it be to locate a business or locate their family, that is unacceptable. What we have right now is unacceptable, period. Um, I would like to see everything we have as a community, including our rates, maps, businesses, a calendar of events, council, um, our city employees. I would like to see all of that available at the click of the mouse on our website. I do not feel that it's council. I think it should have council input, but I think it should come more from the city administrative offices as to what goes into the actual website and who designs the actual website. Um, but what we, what we have now is unacceptable. There are, there are tiny towns that are just blowing us out of the water and it's, we can't have that.
I don't know about you, but I know a topic on the next council agenda. Um, Tammy, she really did, she hit the nail on the head. It is unacceptable for a city of our size to have a website like that. Um, you know, and there's other things that I believe should be on there, all of the city ordinances. You know, if you're a, a resident of, of the city and you, you don't know if you can do this or that, well, you can just get on the website and, and look at the ordinances. Um, and then also council agendas and our meeting minutes should also be posted to a, a website like that. Um, you know, and like Ted said, it doesn't need to be elaborate, it just needs to be user-friendly, so.
I don't know how much more I can add to that, but you're right, everybody's right in our website is poor. Um, we've had discussions as council already that, you know, this is, this is great seeing this many people. If we had this many people show up every week for council, you know, there wouldn't be a single problem in the community. Um, another thing that we talked about is potentially it would be nice to have, maybe if you do a, a link on our website, that we could actually stream our council meetings so people at home could stay home and watch the meeting, even chime in if there's something that they could type in the website to say, "Hey, I got a quick question." Um, that we can try and answer at meetings, but, uh, it does need to be updated.
I think, I think a lot of us should be shared with the Chamber of Commerce or Vinton Unlimited. Um, and all the information everyone talked about should be shared. I think we have a lot to offer and I think Vinton Unlimited could be part of that.
The website's embarrassing. I'm just, I just come from out of town, I wanna go see what's happening in Vinton for day-to-day activity of these. Why would I wanna, why would I wanna make the turn off the interstate to come here? It should show what the great things we have, the parks, pools, safety, the schools. Everything that's good about Vinton needs to be on that website. And right now, nothing is. You can't even get on it. So, unless we can start updating our own little things like that, I could look around here and I personally know a GoDaddy employee that's probably a webpage developer that I would love to have take a whack. There is local talent here that could make the webpage beautiful. And if we don't start tapping into that, nobody's gonna give a sec look. It's just one more stepping block that people put us in third, fourth place. So, thank you.
Well, the website is certainly important, as you can tell. Um, it's probably just as important for us to keep our website going as it is to vote yes for this infrastructure improvement. Uh, one of the things that'll connect is when we have this infrastructure improvement for communications, then our website and all those type of things will fall into place. And they're all correct. The website's pretty bad. But I hope that because it's brought to light tonight by all of you good citizens, it will be on the agenda real soon.
I think one of the most recent times that I was on the Vinton website was, I actually Googled Vinton, Iowa. I think the first, uh, hit that I got on Google was actually Vinton today. Uh, the second one that I got was Vinton Unlimited's page. And the third one was the City of Vinton page. Uh, and I think, from the sounds of it, we can all agree, we wish it was maybe a little bit further down. I don't know. But, um, we had, when I was on there, it, it, it wasn't functional. I'm really happy to hear people saying that we need to take a look at that and jump into that and update it. When I was with Vinton Unlimited, uh, our website was functional. It worked. Uh, I had the opportunity to make it a little bit better when I was with Vinton Unlimited. And, uh, now Melissa has taken it to a whole new level and it's absolutely amazing. Uh, so you can find things very easily. And I think that's the key to a city website, is being able to find things easily, being able to, uh, maybe pay your utility bill online, um, have these functions and the, the things that we do every day and the information we're looking for every day and site selectors are looking for every day. Needs to be available right there at, at people's fingertips. And I think that being on a combination of the Vinton Unlimited website, the City of Vinton website, and any other website that wants to give us a little plug would be fantastic. So, those are the things I'd say.
You also talked a lot about housing. Um, what would you do as far as new housing developments or possibly renovate old housing? And where do we start with that part of it and everything?
Housing has been, over the last year, been talked about a lot. Um, we're trying to make, uh, steps in, in the right direction. If any of you have been following, uh, we have, the city owns three lots over on Q Avenue. Um, their prices were 6,500 for LMI and 10,000 for other citizens. Um, council actually passed a resolution to drop the price of those lots down to $2,000, giving them away essentially. And we held, we're going to help, uh, hold an auction at that council meeting and nobody showed up to buy a lot. Um, there was a stipulation in there. It was a, a little hard, um, to chew on and that was that if an individual purchased that lot, that a single-family dwelling had to be built on that lot within a year. Um, council has, uh, I think agreed on removing that stipulation. Uh, we're, we're trying to get something to happen. Um, and to me, when you make a lot, $2,000, yeah, you gotta build a house on it a year and there was no interest for anybody to build. It kinda makes it hard to grow if there isn't that interest. Um, I would love to open our doors to a developer tomorrow that was interested in coming into the community and putting up a housing development. Um, we've discussed abatement programs, tax abatements for, uh, new construction and also renovations to homes throughout the community. These are all things that we're currently discussing and we're working on. Um, you know, and I'll just go ahead, go ahead and say it. You know, I've had discussions with the city administrator of the city of Vinton possibly building a house on one of the lots that we own out on Q Avenue. Uh, and subcontracting that work out, building a house, and the city of Vinton trying to sell it. Um, you know, if we could sell the house in three months, I'd be all for building another one and trying to sell another one, just to get something going. Um, but then again, we spend money out of our capital improvement fund, you know, $85,000 on building a house and we sit on it for two years. Um, it, it would be a bad thing. But we need, we need everybody to come together and, and we need some interest from some developers out there that are interested in coming to the community of Vinton and doing this because the city cannot. In my opinion, at this point in time, we can't afford to become a developer and start putting up a housing development. So, that's my stance on it.
Here over two minutes. Two minutes, you can hardly touch the housing topic. It's been a hot topic for the last year. Um, I need to know more. I don't, I'm not a developer. I don't know that much about building homes. I don't know about turning homes. Um, it's been said to me that we do need homes, okay? So, what steps do I need to take to learn about developing homes in our community? Um, I've had a discussion with Mary Hainstock. I'd like to further discuss more options with her husband to find out what it takes to get housing going in Vinton.
to get housing going in Vinton. I'm not comfortable just spending your money as a developer and having it fail. If we're going to do something like this, we've got to do it the right way. It's all our monies. We can't just waste away and do it the wrong way. We've had our blog group come in and talk to us about how there is depth and need, and they had an actual developer that told them that Vinton is the best kept secret. If we're the best kept secret, I want that guy to say that I'm your developer, that I'm going to come and develop. But we need to do more research and find out what it's going to take to get homes built in this town. In the same token, I don't want us to be building all these new homes and let the existing homes that follow that way towards our high school and middle school be forgotten about either. We get a lot of complaints, and our current mayor does a great job of going after these homes that are getting really run down and they look bad. To build new homes, you have to have it look attractive to the whole community to bring new people in. So there's a lot more to go with homes. I'll stick there two minutes.
I think we do need to move forward, open up another expansion, decide on where we could go, but at the same time button up all the empties possibly we do have, get those all completed, and then move forward. I think that's an important thing to do.
Housing, housing, housing. Build it, and they will come. Well, it touched on it, but our population really hasn't improved. We have some beautiful new housing developments, and I would encourage you, we have some more. However, we are not the City of Vinton development company. We need people to come in and want to develop here. Everybody says, let's tiff it. Tiff it should not be the cure-all, end-all item to get people to build houses. It should be that last little item that people use to put the icing on the cake that will make them say, yep, I'm going to do the whole development, come in. Now, if somebody has fiscally responsible plans, I doubt there's anybody sitting at this table that would say, no, we're not interested. But you can't come up to a city council and say, we need housing, turn around, walk out the door, and then blame them for doing it. That doesn't work. Bring them some options, bring some plans, bring one that the city does it all, bring one that the developer does well, bring one that people share the cost of doing so, but give them options to choose from. And yes, Brian stated, we need to figure out how we're going to infill some of these empty lots in town. We do not want to create a donut effect where all the people move to the outsides and the inside starts to deteriorate and we have a big hole, and when people drive through the center of our community, they see a rundown, dilapidated homes. It's not the way to go. Yes, is housing going to be part of our future? It has to be. But we also need to do a micro-assessment with the hospital, with Mary Jo, find out what her hiring needs are going to be in the future, so we can be prepared if she has an, yep, I'm going to hire twenty new teachers next year. We've got to have a place for them to live. We've got to make sure we're ready for them. And how to do that is with the housing study that these people have already agreed to send out for RFPs, and once we get that, then you can assess things and how they're going to go. But it can't just be a broad, all-housing thing. It has to be more specific how it's going to relate to Vinton.
Well, I'm extremely happy to hear our council speak the way they are this evening, because we have really hashed over housing this last six months, to the point where many times I have pushed them almost to the breaking point where they like to not have me show up again. We have spent a lot of time looking at vacant lots. I believe we found those three out there on Q Avenue, which I'm a little embarrassed if we didn't realize that a couple of years ago. There's another lot on West Sixth Street that I'm looking into right now. And I think that one of the things we have to agree upon is that the city does, in fact, have to lead the way a little bit. True, we cannot do it all. And true, the gentleman that came to the business opportunity group and said that Vinton was a well-kept secret, he is doing houses in Iowa City, folks. You don't make a lot of money on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, but if you're making a three hundred thousand dollar house, the builder makes a lot better percentage. That's one of the problems with the low-to-modern-income lots that we have on Q Avenue. I was, I really felt like I fell on my face on that one. I pushed the council to back me on it, and as they did, I was so grateful, and then we didn't sell one. I went home, I touted that night, I got the next day and found another lot that was vacant, and we're looking into that one. You cannot stop, you cannot quit trying to be aggressive. And I think that with our assistance to the business opportunity group, Vinton Unlimited, the schools, the hospital, we will succeed in making housing another completion for Vinton like we have in the last twenty years.
I must feel like I should probably do a poll or something, because I was the director of Vinton Unlimited when this whole housing thing happened. BAWG is a subcommittee of Vinton Unlimited, and we got the discussion going, and I'm very glad we did. I think housing is definitely needed in Vinton. What I'd like to see is some sort of incentives put together to get people to build. And I honestly don't care if you're going to put up one house or if you're going to put up thirty houses. I think that we can come up with a plan to put together some incentives for people to build houses in Vinton. We've had, not only, it hasn't been a steady population, it's been a declining population over the years. Slightly, but slightly declining leads to still negative numbers. So I think we need to take a look at what possibilities exist as far as incentives to get people to take that next step and build a new house, fill in an empty lot that we have, do a development, if that's what you want to spend your time and effort in doing. There are a lot of different options, and I'd love to see the city get involved with some incentives to help get the ball rolling. And so that's where I would push, is something that's consistent across the board, not the one person individual, not for any one person to do something specific, but take the information from a housing study and move forward with a plan that any person can use for any development that they want to do.
I agree we need to look at housing, it's a very important thing. My thought is a little bit is, kind of, what brought people to Vinton? Jobs. I mean, a lot of people work here and live here in Vinton. And I'd like to know exactly over the years, how many houses have been built in the last five years, in the last ten years. Vinton has not been moving in a great direction. Our population is stacked, the town feels stacked. I agree that we need to fill in the holes, they have to be filled in. At development, you need to have the developer come and help, because that's their job, their development. The city needs to take an ownership role in it with the infrastructure and to help them do it the right way. There are things here in town, additions that were done with, I believe there's one addition that may not have a main water line, I don't know if it's going to have a main going down through it. I know there's a lot more to it than just building houses and they will come. It's not going to happen unless there's jobs behind it. We are close enough to Cedar Rapids, we're going to draw people in from Cedar Rapids, especially with the 100 addition. But we're at the county seat. We have been, I feel like we're taking a path, and we're letting the other committees take more of a leadership role in growth. Urbana's grown, Shelsburg's grown, Atkins' grown, Center Point's grown. Everybody's growing but us and Waukegan. I think that's the more important.
This is a tough one. I do feel that Vinton has taken the first steps. We have sent out RFPs for a housing study, that's step number one. Another step we took a year ago was to rezone certain lots that are vacant in town so people could build non-conformity. That has not happened. Steps are being taken. It's a slow process. We, as a council, have been doing most that we can. I, as a real estate agent, I've started showing houses in Urbana, I've started showing houses in Shelsburg, not by my choice, but by request. It's not what I want to do. I know that we need things here in town. I would like to see rehab projects starting. Most of us live in town, most of us live in older neighborhoods. I live in an older neighborhood. I would like to see help for my neighbors to be able to fix up their existing properties, or help for a homeowner that wants to sell to fix up their existing property. That too is important to me. We live in a beautiful town. I don't want to show houses in Shelsburg, I don't want to sell houses in Shelsburg. I want people to come here. And I know that we need work, but the steps are being taken contrary to what may be the general consensus, but we are doing what we need.
I'm here in the room tonight, our representative of our school district, our economic development people, BU and EDG. We also have people from the tourism group in the room, pay attention to this, our point in the city council, do you want to work with all these groups to make Vinton more of a community with a plan to succeed across more? Tammy, you can go first.
Okay. I would, I would like to approach something like that as more of what would they need our help with? I would like them to come to us and ask us or tell us where we can be more proactive. These individual organizations that you just mentioned are very specialized, we are not. So I think it's more important for them to come to us with a plan and ask our help in getting their agendas moved forward.
I would agree with Tammy completely on that. They just, like, Brian actually came to council a while back and was talking about building the world's largest ear of corn. I'm bringing it up. You know, one thing, I had an idea on that, and that was, we're actually working on, Vinton County Conservation is on our bike trail right now that runs from Vinton to Garrison to Disers. And we've been discussing possibly moving the trailhead to a different location, and I haven't talked to Brian about this yet, or if I did, I don't remember, but possibly if we gain the ability to move that trailhead, we would hopefully maybe be able to talk to Mr. Parr and put that world's tallest ear of corn right next to our bike trail. And I think things like that, that we can draw tourism to the community to look at that, and then they can see the bike trail that runs, you know, from Vinton to Disers, and then also hopefully the city can incorporate bike trails throughout the community. And just working together, I believe we can accomplish anything. But like Tammy said, we have a lot on our plate as council members, and so we do need individuals from the community to come to us, come to a council meeting, bring these things to our attention. And I know everyone on council would be more than willing to work with any of these groups throughout the community.
So, the garden club, see Brendan there, the garden club, I don't know much about the garden club, but every year when the fair edition comes out in the live wire, we see the pictures. It'd be nice if these other groups that we have, if we can incorporate this into the new website we're going to develop. That's the easiest solution I have. But as they said, it would be nice to have you folks come and give input of what you'd like us to help with, so.
Well, Tammy said it all, but going back to Zach's comment about the ear of corn, that is still the worst. Some other projects kind of got in the way this year, but I think truthfully, all the groups that we do have, they all work great on their own. Come to council, if there's something they can help with, I don't know what more they can do. Really, I think, I think we have great opportunities with the people we have in town.
I think with all the groups that Dean has mentioned and the people sitting at the table, we all have one goal in mind, is making Vinton the best community we can make. And now, you don't go forward in life without a plan. And my proposal is that we develop a strategic plan for Vinton. Every business has a strategic plan to start with. So that way, if this entire table of council members choose, the plan or leaves, the plan stays in place. You develop a plan, where do you want to see the community in one year, three years, five years? Every one of those people should have a select member on that committee to help develop that strategic plan. And then we choose people to champion it. We have committees on council already that are in place to do that. But you need a plan to follow. And if everybody has the same goal in mind, when all these people come to council and ask, hey, can we do this? They know what they're voting for, they know what they're voting for the future of Vinton. But you've got to have a plan to get there. Everybody has to be involved in that plan, or it goes nowhere.
The strategic plan that Bud is speaking about, actually, we were, had a strategic plan meetings, what was it, two or three years ago? I don't see anybody right now that was on that meeting or in those meetings with me, but we actually need a plan in place. The problem with strategic plans, a windstorm shows up or a flood shows up, it's very, very hard to make a plan that can't be moving all the time. And I think that in the future, as I have twenty, a lot of our younger council people, you have to be more right than you are wrong. I believe that to make a plan and then have people think that that's the only plan that they can count on, that isn't the way I would operate things. I believe that we need to move all the time. I think that along with housing, along with all of these groups that do a tremendous job down to Celebration Park, the arts, all of those things, they change a lot. A plan is good, but a specific plan to me is very restrictive. I believe that we need to have more groups like this. And once again, I applaud my council people, they are saying more tonight than they have said in council for months. And I absolutely approve, they're doing a fantastic job. And to be real honest about it, I didn't know they were quite as engaged as they are, and I'm tickled, they're fantastic. We need to have a plan, but it has to be moving all the time.
I guess I'd say that as far as the city council itself having the whole weight of a goal of bringing everybody together to do the exact same, move down the same path, as it's been said, the city can come up with a strategic plan they have in the past, let's dig it out and move forward. Let's move past the obstacles that have maybe been in the past. I think Vinton's done a great job of coming back from all of those obstacles. And I think that now is a great time to get that plan out again and take a look at it, and how we can, what groups it's going to take to come together to move forward, not on that plan, but also getting, getting all these groups together, inviting the chair of each of these committees, bring them together and see how we can work to move in forward to cross-train so that there's opportunities down the road and you don't have one person doing everything. I think there's just a lot of opportunity in Vinton, and getting everybody on the same page is really key to making the community move forward.
Well, I think that having the capable people in the positions like we do, like Mary Jo and then BU, you know, that's a big part, because they know what they're going to need. And hopefully, they'll be fearless and come to us, and we can help them in any way progress. I love that, like our arts, people like Brian, they have ideas, they're willing to share their ideas, and they're fearless about it. They're going out and doing it. You know, that's what this town needs. It needs to be fearless. We need to go after things and draw people in. You know, a plan is, you have to have a plan. Every business has a plan. The town has a plan. We need to engage and enact and help people fulfill what they need to do to make everybody as a community work together better. as a community work together better.
Now we're going to have a few questions just for one or two members of the screen. The first question is from the two mayor candidates. Basically, what is a mayor's job description? Mary Jo first, John.
Mayor's job description is involving, you appoint to approximately twenty committees. I run it, and I like to go to all of the commissions at least twice, if not three or four times a year. Some of them I don't make it as many times. Answering the phone calls, going to the meetings, being involved in every single aspect. I like to go out and meet with my city employees at the street department, water, sewer. I like to go to the park and rec board and tell them that if there's anything that they haven't got from us at city hall, please come and get engaged with us. I believe that the mayor's job is to listen more than speak. I think that the mayor's job is to answer the questions if you can, or get the answers that, if you can't, get the answers for people when they call you. I do answer my phone 24/7. I'm not afraid to tell you it's 929-4386. But the only rule that you must have as a mayor is, if you won't tell me who you are when you call me at 12 o'clock at night, and I can hear the jingle box in the background, there's a good chance I'm going to hang up. Now, does that happen very often? No, not so many times. But you'd have to ask my wife how many hundreds of calls, and she's answered while I wasn't home. The mayor has a, I have the responsibility to go out and show people that this is a wonderful place to live. And that despite what may look like we haven't been going forward in the last twenty years, we actually have been maintaining and edging ahead a little bit. We have the advantage and the disadvantage of being thirty miles from Cedar Rapids and Waterloo. But we are a better community, and we should maximize our efforts to get people to come here and live, because once they live here and have, the schools are full, our community will in fact get better a little at a time.
The mayor's that and a whole lot more. The mayor has to elect the council members to do their job. They are elected by each one of their wards. If you guys put your trust in them, you'll be able to run the city. The mayor's to help guide them. You have the entire vision, what he sees for the Vinton in the future, what all these little people on the committees see for the future. To bring everybody together, get everybody on the same page, and let the council do their work to get to that point. Yes, the mayor has to be a champion for the city, but everybody in this room has to be a champion for the city. If we can't become a better community to make that happen, then I would be failing as a mayor. We've got to bring everybody together to make Vinton the best community. Everybody up here believes it. And yes, do I, should we go to every committee? Yes. Time does not allow that, and to think that you can is just the equivalent of your own fears. That's why the council members are here. You hire people that you trust can do a good job. For a hard-time council, a hard-time mayor, we hire a city manager to run the day-to-day functions of the town. Period. The mayor there is to provide guidance and to make sure everybody is staying on the same course. And that is what the main function of the mayor is. Yes. Everybody needs to come together, and everybody can call the mayor and complain all they want, first thank the mayor for helping things out. But that's what it is. The mayor's there to lead the people through, make the tough decisions, but let the council do their job. That's why they're there.
Tammy, you're the only council member running that's run before, I'm going to tell you about. What is what you've learned from the process, how much you've enjoyed it, what you challenge in Vinton, and maybe offer some advice to the first timers?
I'm not good at advice. I have run before. At the time, council was kind of, it was definitely not in the forefront of people's minds like it is today. I love the process. I love the fact that we are all here for the same goal. I love the fact that this year, this time, this election, you guys get to ask questions and find out exactly what our opinions are. That's not been done before, and I think it's important. I think the fact that we are all elected to our seats says a lot, not for us, but for you, for everyone that gets out and votes, it says a lot. I talk a lot, I say a lot that I don't have time for Monday morning quarterbacks, people that, that repeat things that aren't factual. I like it when people come to council, when people call, when they ask the questions and we get the facts. That's what we're all here for.
Got a similar question for you, five first timers. Congratulations, first of all, for running, I don't know how sorry, it's been a hundred and twenty seconds ago I lost, fortunately. Tell us how, tell us maybe what you were afraid of when you started the process, what you liked about it, and maybe offer advice to somebody back here who thinks maybe I should run someday. Jason, I'll let you go first.
I guess when I was trying to figure out whether I was going to do it, I was thinking back to my time with Vinton Unlimited, and the opportunities that I had to be a part of the community in a unique way. I had the opportunity to get to know business owners and individual members, nonprofit, people involved in nonprofit organizations in the community, and it was all focused on watching and seeing Vinton grow. That's what got me excited about taking this opportunity to run for city council. I've not run for public office before, so this is a very new experience for me, but so far it's been an interesting one, a fun one. I've gotten to meet a lot of new people that I didn't know before, just like when I was with Vinton Unlimited. There were a lot of people I got to know in a professional setting that have really come to be, be very good friends of mine as well. So, I just would love the opportunity to represent the fourth ward on the city council and watch not only our ward grow and succeed, but the community as a whole.
To be honest, early this year, I would never have thought that I would run for council, to be honest. It was one of those things, I was talking to some friends of mine, and we're talking about the community, and what direction we'd like to see the community change. And it got me thinking, you know, the city's been doing some really good things. It feels like we're at a tipping point right now. We can go one way or the other. We've got a really good police chief, we've got a really good city coordinator. I feel like the city is starting to have, get on a roll a little bit. And I got to thinking more and more about it, and I thought, yeah, I think I might try. This is my first time ever running for a public office, also as an at-large. But I think the sense of community and to helping the community and serve the community is kind of an important thing, and I think everybody should try and do, think about what they want for their community, and if they have strong feelings about it, run. You know, city council is kind of probably a thankless job in some ways, but it's also a way to help your community even better.
As I said earlier, a little over a year ago, I was appointed to the third ward seat. Absolutely enjoyed it. Learned a lot, and I believe that I will continue to learn for many, many years to come. I did, I did lie in bed quite a few nights until two o'clock in the morning thinking about whether or not I was going to run again. Thirty-one years old, I'm married, I have two kids, I have a full-time job. Being on council, you know, I'm also, I was appointed from the mayor to the North Totten Ambulance Board. Strong possibility I'm going to be on the watershed management authority. And so council, two nights a week, or two nights a month, ambulance board meets once a month, you know, so it's not just the council meetings, it's everything else. And making that decision for me, you know, I didn't want to miss out on stuff, activities and sports for my kids, but at the same time, I'm very passionate about the community. I'm very family-oriented. Thirty-one years old, I've lived in this community all but five of those years. I would love to see both of my children grow up, graduate high school, go to college, and move back to Vinton. So, anything that I can do to help better this community, to make it not only attractive to my own children, but to many other people as well. I believe at this point in time, I'm in it for the long haul, so we'll see how long I can stay on.
So, four years ago, I started this journey, not really knowing what I was getting into. And as my time progressed, I found out that I am a risk manager. I manage risk. If you've ever been to a council meeting, you'll know that I will be stubborn, and these two can attest to that. I'm not afraid to say no. We had, you all bought a thirty thousand dollar lawnmower for our water utility. I said no at first, because I want to make sure that I'm managing that risk, to make sure that's the right decision that we spent our money on. Is it the right amount of money to spend our money on? And that's, that's one thing that I've learned over four years, that you have to make tough decisions. Are they right? I hope so. Are they wrong? It could be. But it's, it's, it's been fun. And a couple notes for you.
It's kind of funny, I got the same question Bud asked me when I sat down. I've been involved in some projects here in town, and I've enjoyed it a great deal. And I think I have a little bit of creative ideas that might help the town a little bit. Maybe I can bring that forward. And I'm unemployed, so I can help, you know, get all kinds of time.
Our next three questions are just for the two mayor candidates. One is speaking for Mayor Watson, and each question does come from members of the public side, we treat it as a good. John, at least, at least one council meeting you left your mayor's chair, you addressed the council from the seat, who's people talking to the council from? And can you explain your thoughts originally to your type of community?
He's talking about a council meeting about two weeks ago. And as I had state, I have stated just this evening, I tend to push. I tend to push a lot. I believe that the council is there to make decisions. I believe, as Bud says, I need to help them maybe make a good, to get information and try to make a good, sound decision. But I do need them to speak up. I'm not kidding when I tell you that how pleased and how, I think they're doing wonderful tonight. These council people, I didn't feel that they were engaged enough. So that's what I did. I walked around, and I faced them, and I laid into them. Then I was on a roll, and I laid into the chief police too. And then I laid into the, to the attorney. The problem was, and the problem is, that just because I think we need to run, thank God I've got people like Zach, Tammy, Chris, sometimes we do have to slow down and really look things over, but there are some issues that I believe that we have to act on. That house on Second Street and Eighth Avenue, that dang house, I've been trying to get rid of that house for two years. There was a pickup truck of, jacked up, with no tires on it. Why does the mayor have to tell the chief that? That's what I asked him. By the way, it's still there. There was an issue that, the reason the house on Second Street is there is because the attorney dropped the ball. I wanted to know why. My reason for getting out there and addressing the council that night was to fire him up, and boy did I. Zach and I had an excellent conversation afterwards. And I am so proud of Zach and all of the council people for doing an excellent job this evening. That's why I did it, folks. That's the way I roll. Thank you.
Would you, as a council now, can you briefly summarize how you responded to this conversation that night?
Same context is helpful. I don't want to scare anybody, obviously. I think ultimately I knew what John was attempting to do that evening, and oh boy did he. He lit a fire underneath my chair. And like I said before, you know, we're all families. We all have, we all have families. And, you know, I feel that I am very engaged, and I, and I, anything that John brings to council, I really can't say that I've had an idea from him that I didn't agree with. I maybe didn't agree with how hard he was pushing it and how fast, but, I mean, I'm not going to lie, I took it personally. I took it very personally because I feel like I am very engaged with it. And, but like John said, we had a conversation afterwards, and, you know, and that's what it takes, you know? Yeah, we may have had a brief fight at a council meeting, but afterwards John and I discussed the topics, and that's what we do. That's why I love this group. We can, we can work together and make things happen, and yeah, feelings are going to get hurt from time to time, but you shake hands afterwards and keep moving forward, because if you don't, the city's not going to move where we need it to move.
Tammy. Thank you Zach for taking all the emotion that I was feeling while I'm there. I just sat there and let him go. Like I said earlier, I felt more comfortable on the other side, that's what I said at chambers. But it was, it was, John was talking to us, and, you know, everything he was talking about were things that, yeah, we're looking into, but we kind of sometimes have to reel them back in. You know, we want the same things that he wants, but we can't just do it like right now. We've got, we've got to make educated, smart decisions. We just can't, we meet twice a month. Is that enough? Probably not, to run a city. I don't think it's enough. But that's the way we're set up, and that's the direction we've gone for years. And we get, we get information, and we have to filter it out within twenty-four hours and make a decision on that. Is that enough time? I don't think so. But we do a good job of getting through what we have presented to the city.
Well, in regards to the night you questioned, I could not get home fast enough to throw open the door and tell anybody who would listen, if you ever needed to be in a meeting, that was the one that you all needed to be at. I think we did take offense, because Zach was our vocal piece that night. I took offense because it was mentioned that we are not engaged. I completely, one hundred percent disagree with that. I think all of us up here are very engaged in what goes on. Maybe the conversations are being had with the same individuals, I don't know, but I do disagree with that. I think we're all very engaged. It's why we're on the ballot again this year. And as far as, just one real quick thing that Chris brought up, city council is two nights a month. If we could look back over our calendar over the past year, it's been many, many, many more nights than that. With the budgeting coming up, it'll be many, many more nights than two nights a month. But schedule-wise, that is what we are scheduled. Other than that, he kept us engaged, so.
Two more questions from the audience, just for you, Mayor Watson. You ran for county supervisor a couple years ago, do you think you might do that again, or are you happy to stay running for mayor?
For those of you who know me, I usually do things my own way, and Lord knows, that's not necessarily the best way to do things. I wanted to prove that an independent candidate could win. I had some really excellent backing, spent a lot of money trying to prove to people that an independent can win. I don't think so. I did knock over, I knocked on over two thousand doors. I tried to get my message out there. I came up with a couple of new things, but, no, I wouldn't have run for supervisor again because, A, I love being a But, no, I want to run the supervisor again, because A, I love being a mayor, B, I'm sixty-four years old now. You know, it's time for younger people to start stepping up to the plate. I would love to do this mayor job at least one more time. And to be real honest about it, if I run again, it'll be for the council, so I can have a vote. The mayor doesn't necessarily get a vote very often. He does get to be involved in a tie or two, but that doesn't happen very often. Once again, tremendous. These three people, they, and Zach specifically, they set me straight that night, and I, I followed through. Because after you've been in a community like I have, and talked to as many people as I do, answered as many phone calls as I do, then you wonder, okay, wait a minute, are they not, are they not as engaged as I am? So I asked the question. It might have been a little bit offensive, and a person should apologize for that. But then, on the other hand, if you believe that you have to get people fired up to get them going, I accomplished that that night, and those three people are tremendous.
Last two digital questions. Question, you mentioned this earlier, can I, somebody asked us to ask you if you plan to keep, and say in opposite direction, if you're going to resign, you'd be nice to do it last time.
Like I said, I truly enjoyed being on council. I really did. A year ago, I started having thoughts about running for mayor. We just hired a new administrator. I didn't feel, out of respect to John, out of respect to the new administrator, that me wanting to also be in control of the city was spared them developing a relationship together. I chose to step back, so they can get to know each other, and figure out how they're going to do it together. So, a year later, now's my opportunity to step in, and maybe let the younger people take over for a change, because we need to move forward. But am I going to keep resigning? No. I didn't want to. It was out of respect for the other people, is why I left last time. If I had a do-over, I think I'd make the same decision. They have to make things on their own, and maybe in there, that would have created animosity. And I didn't want that to happen, because I want Benton to be productive, and that would not be productive.
Now, these questions are for everybody. A few weeks ago, in a meeting, I, somebody said something that was funny, but not intentionally. They said, we don't respond to cat calls. And, um, we know that the dog situation is under control, and that's going very well, and people back here, they want me to ask you about what you're going to do about cats. And like Chris said, the last few weeks ago, it's going to come back, you know, on your plate. So, um, Ryan, what do you think we should do, if we should do a certain cat control?
I kind of stepped my, I stepped my bounds on the last council meeting, Zach was explaining some of the things, and my question is, is where's the city's policy on varmints? I don't know that we have one. I don't know how we control that, but I think the wild cats, if they might be, should fit in that same category. I mean, we neuter them, we still have wild cats. Feasibility, it might be euthanization. You know, I hate to say that, too, but that would be an endless problem. You know, I, I don't know that there's that many people out there willing to take cats into their house right now, so, and I don't realize how many problems it is with cats, I guess. I've heard a little bit about it, but not a lot.
There's been a lot of talk about the spay-neuter program coming up, cedar rats, they'll come trap the cats, pick them up, spay them, bring them back, turn them back loose. They can't reproduce, but they still spread disease throughout the animals. I think, now that we have a little bit of extra funding for not supplying to the Fozzie Shelter, I think one option could be that the city buys a bunch of live tracts. Any homeowner that thinks they have a feral cat problem, come down, give a totally refundable deposit, borrow those traps, capture the cats, and let them decide what they want to do. If they want to tame cedar rats from the main society, find a home for them, but all I say is bring the trap back, and let citizens, and make decisions on their own. It's true, I've said that out loud, we don't have a cat ordinance. A gentleman stopped me while I was at McDowell's, I got to tell a story. And he says, what are you going to do about those cats, my flower pot? I said, listen, why would, and he's a big guy, bigger than I am, I said, why would a two-hundred-pound man like you want a government agency to take over for you with a cat problem? Why wouldn't you want a government agency to do that? It's your responsibility. No, it's not. Folks, one thing Bud and I do agree on, we've got to let people take care of themselves a little bit. And the cat issue in our community, which I believe is not maybe as bad as we think it is, I don't know. There's a lot of cats, but I don't know if they're as bad as we have heard. To date, if I'm aware, we have had two specific bona fide certified complaints. One was a gentleman at McDowell's, who I did answer, and I gave him a lot of options, and of course, he only remembered one, which is, that's okay, it happens to the mayor. The other one was a lady that called and told Chris Ward that he was the worst man on earth because he doesn't have a cat policy. And then she hung up. I don't know what her name was. So once again, if you call me, please, just tell me what your name is, because then you're a certified, bona fide complaint. But if you're just going to call, scream at me, and then hang up, anybody can do that to anyone. But yes, I think with the cat situation, the live traps should work. The neuter-spay program is, there's a group that would take twenty-five at a time. Anybody want to volunteer to hang on to those till we catch twenty-five? Not I. I think that, I think that in years to come, and I think Zach has information right now, Chris Ward came back from, where was he, folks? He was at some meeting out in East Coast, I believe. And they're, they're actually going to come out with a, with a food that you feed these animals, and it makes them all, so they can't have babies. It makes them all sterile. They have to be fed, and is it thirty days, Zach? Yeah, you've got to feed them for thirty days, and then they're sterile. Now, there's an idea. And what we would do, I would imagine, is we figure out how to feed them in our sewer, in our storm sewers, because a lot of cats live in there. And we would keep it up, and it might be one way to solve the issue. There are many, many cities throughout the United States that have hundreds of thousands of cats that they're dealing with. So I think that someone will probably figure out how this issue needs to be resolved, and I think that, and I hope that until that time, the citizens of Benton can take some of that responsibility on themselves. I don't have a, I don't have a good plan for cats at this point in time, but I'm not opposed to, listen.
I didn't realize we had a cat problem. I guess that's the short answer. I, my gut reaction is, we've, we've got a fantastic organization right downtown Benton that has a storefront full of cats. They're the experts, in my opinion. I, maybe they're not. I like to think they are, they've got a store full of cats. So, I, I don't know the answer to this. I don't know what the rules are, I don't know what the regulations are. I'd say partner with, with friends of the shelter downtown, and get their advice, and find out what, what kind of solutions are available. That's all I can say, Bud, mate.
Well, I guess I'm in the same boat. I really didn't realize we had a cat problem until my wife told me about it today. She goes, you're going to be asked about the cat issue, possibly. I'm like, what cat issue? Well, I really don't have a lot. I do like the idea of the live trap, where you can rent them. And I think that really the way it should be is up to the homeowner's discretion, if they're, their property is for all the things.
I don't have an answer either. I know it's not going to be a quick fix. I like the idea of the live traps, and leaving it up to the homeowner. But there again, you know, it feels like we're maybe passing the buck a little bit. And I, I'm not going to lie, I think maybe we are going to have to pass the buck just a little bit. I was happy not to deal with the cat issue for the very brief period that we had that we weren't. And then my niece came to visit a couple weeks ago from Northern Virginia, and she's very active in the Humane Society, and she shamed me terribly for not having the cat plan. So, and I know, and I know it's important to many of our citizens, so I know that it's something we have to address, but it is not going to be an easy fix, and it's not going to be a quick fix. So it's just going to involve some research by Chris, research by council, input from citizens, and finding out from other communities what they do that works, at something that's cost-effective for the city, by all means.
Tammy's last statement, cost-effective for the city and the citizens. I did get a little upset with the, we don't handle cat calls. As, as representatives, I don't believe our stance on anything should be, no, no. At this point in time, it's, it's okay to say, we don't handle cat problems. And like John had brought up, you know, we are looking into alternatives. Like he talked about the food. It's not just putting food out into the, into the community that's going to render feral cats sterile. It's sending out notices with the utility bills, warning the citizens of Benton, if you let your house cat roam for the next thirty days, you need to keep it locked up in your house, because if it's a five-thousand-dollar-priced cat, you breed it, it ends up sterile, because we're trying to sterilize the feral cats. So, I mean, there's going to be a lot of involvement from the entire community in anything that we do. I like cats. I do, I like house cats. I do not like feral cats. They spread disease. There's actually studies that are showing that they're spreading disease to wild game. And then if you don't cook that game properly, you as a human will contract diseases that cats are spreading to wild animals. There's been studies done, billions of songbirds every year in the United States fall victim to feral cats and to house cats that are just left to roam the city. Do we want citizens going out and discharging firearms in the city limits to take care of their feral cat problem? Absolutely not. The live trap option at this time, yes, it is a very, very viable option for us. But just note, for the citizens that are out there that are concerned at this point in time, we are working towards something. You know, we don't have a facility large enough in the county even to handle a problem like this. When we, and I'll end here shortly, when we, when we started our contract with the Cedar Valley Humane Society for Dogs, they, they talked about their feral cat problem. In the unincorporated areas of Lynn County, they were having over seven hundred cats a month come in. Benton County doesn't have the tax base to pay for that, so.
So I don't have an answer for the cat problem either. I did work, I turned in emails, and council packet, and kind of chuckled and said, all right, we're going to talk about cats tonight, council. And I got nudged by my boss, and said to him, quiet, because Gal, in the cubicle that we work in, she's a very adamant person about cats. And I says, okay. And she says, just be very cautious what you say around her. So curiosity that killed the cat, I had to go down and talk to her about cats. And she says, I know where you're taking this. She says, whatever you guys are doing is probably the wrong thing to do with cats. You're probably destroying cats, aren't you? I says, no, no, no. I says, you know, I says, but give me, give me an idea of what should we be doing. And she gave me a number, and some information that I'm following up on, to possibly bring to the council that we can discuss. There are alternatives out there, but, you know, we have to investigate. Chris went to this council, and he said, this is not just a Benton problem, this is a nationwide problem. There's cats. In fact, Chris said he was approached and said, how come Benton doesn't have a cat problem? Because he was the only one that wasn't talking about cats. But it's, it's a, it's a big deal.
A few times tonight, the subject of city employees has been mentioned.
Come on, there you turn around and talk to us.
Yeah, we can't hear you back.
A few times tonight, they have mentioned city employees. A question for these guys is, how well do you think our city employees are being treated as far as pay, career advancement, opportunities? Are we getting enough Benton benefits for people to want to come to work in Benton? And if not, what, we do a lot of checks.
When I was on council, I know there's such a, health insurance was a big, big topic in how we're going to provide for the city employees. They have one of the top-rated benefits packages in the state. They're the Cadillac Plan, almost making them unquiet, unable to get Obamacareed, because of this, it can get reduced down. Any rates, you go look at what they're getting paid, their package, if you compare to other communities, or them. I think they're treated very well. Their union has done a great job negotiating over the years. John's credit, he's done a great job counter negotiating, as well as this council, as we went. They try to keep things in check. The problem is, as city employees grow, they always want more. And so, everybody, everybody wants, everybody wants to make more money, because the citizens have to pay them. So we have to watch it, and let it grow slowly and fairly to everybody. Yes, I think every employee in Benton is doing a great job, and I think they're treated more than fair. In the next, I think, seven to ten days, I'll be starting union negotiations with the Teamsters Police. Their packages, from appearances, it would, it would look like they're packages outstanding. And it is very, very well to live in our community and be a city employee, whether it be the water, the sewer, the police. But on a statewide scale, in towns our size, the city of Benton has been and remains in the bottom two of a group of, I believe, it's either eight or ten towns our size. That is not a bad thing. Some of those communities have sewer and water rates that are twice ours. We have lower. The point is, and what I really want to impress upon you is that, even though it would appear as though they're, they're really exceptional in the scheme of things, and when we try to be fair to our citizens and our employees, I think that we're doing, and they are right where they probably should be for a town our size. I think that they are, the list of things that I have them, and I have been involved with that a lot, have them do is tremendous now. I think that all of the things that they are doing now is twice what they used to do twenty-five or thirty years ago. I think they do an excellent job. There's not a one of them I, I wouldn't recommend to work anywhere. And I think that even though it would appear on paper like they get a wonderful whole package, it's appropriate for a town our size. And in the status of the eight to ten towns that are our size, as I say, we really are on the bottom. But there are other advantages of being in Benton, and I hope that our citizens and our employees realize that.
I haven't had the opportunity to be a part of the negotiations, or be a part of the establishing the compensation for our city employees, but I, I guess my hope is that, that it's been looked at carefully enough that we are treating our city employees appropriately to the work that they're doing, to the work that they're expected to be doing, and rewarding them for that work appropriately. The city has a budget that we need to stick, stick to, and if we aren't managing those costs...
And if we aren't managing those costs, I mean, employee benefits and employment compensation is, has gotta be one of the biggest costs of the city. It is of any, any business. So managing that and making sure that we're staying within a budget that makes sense for our community, so taxes don't rise for everybody, so that we can meet our obligations as a city, I think is what's, what's key. And so, as far as, do our city employees get, get paid enough? Probably not. But can we figure out steps to compensate them better? I'd love to look at some options.
I've, I've kind of been the same vote as Nate. I haven't had a chance to know that much about what our employees, or city employees are making. But one thing that kind of comes to mind, you definitely do have to make sure that there's a good check and balance, that you're not overpaying for somebody to change life or something. But, you know, I guess I feel like they probably are at a proper rate. Just because of the, we really don't have a turnover in this town of city employees, I don't believe. And that tells me that they're probably about where they should be. They're content, and do they want more? Everybody wants more. But once again, you have to stay in those balances.
Yes, I think our city employees, from the part-time employees at the city office, from the Parks and Rec Department, all the way up to the full-time employees at the Sewer and Water do an outstanding job. All of our employees do an outstanding job. I've had the pleasure and opportunity to pass thank you notes back to some of our employees when they've gone above and beyond, and that is an awesome feeling. Earlier this year, we kind of dubbed it "The Year of the Employee." And we took steps some might not consider a major. I considered it heart failure major when we took these steps. But we took steps to improve their situation. And as Nathan mentioned, we do have a budget. And we do have to conform to that budget. And there are times when it's very restrictive. And, and we do the best that we can. Like Bud said, you know, employees always maybe want a little bit more. And we have done everything we could this year to get them what we can. Is it enough? Maybe, maybe not. We are still down in the bottom percentile of towns our size. But like Ted said, we don't have a turnover. So that tells you something right there. People are happy in Vinton, so.
I can say the same thing that everybody else has. The one thing that I'll just add to that, and it's something that I, I really think is important. In the year that I've been on board, I have seen multiple times that there is the opportunity to advance within the city. We had full-time employees that are now supervisors, Park and Rec Director, you know, had that opportunity to move up. And that shows me that they are happy, that they are compensated how they should be. Their benefit package is as good as it should be. Because they wanna move up the chain, they wanna stay with the community as well, so.
I dislike wages. Gives me a headache every year when we talk about it. We have an awesome staff. Could we pass more of them? Potentially, yeah, we could cross train, you know? There's always room for cross training. Who doesn't work for a company that doesn't cross train? The thing that they forget, employees forget, is that you get a, you get a salary, you get a dollar amount. But that package, that health insurance package, that, that just looks like its own separate little box. You got your salary, here, that's another box. What they, what you don't realize is that when you put that on there, you've got a pretty good sized box. Could be more, sure. But is it right sized for Vinton? I think so. But again, we have negotiations every year. We talk about what we think is fair. They agree to it. This year, we have, the Chief of Police has done an outstanding job. He came to us at council one night and said that he's tired of having the lowest-paid part-time police officers in the city, and actually around the state. He says, "To be the lowest in the state," he says, "when I need a part-time officer, when my full-time guys are gone," he says, "I'm getting the bottom of the barrel for officers." Do you folks want that on our streets tonight? And what that entails is that you got somebody that might park the car, take a nap. Or if you want pay, a part-time employee, the best. There wasn't one person in council that even bought. We said, "We wanna be the best." And we did. So we're expecting nothing but the best. Employee, employee wages is a top subject. We could go on all night, not going to.
Well, I have no experience with this, but being around some of the city employees, I've never heard it complain. And I think most of them are pretty happy to be on the city. You know, it's a pretty good job to have, I think. I've never heard any complaints, so.
Two people have asked us to ask these guys about the possibility of a new recreation center being built. And what it would entail, what it would cause, what it would include. I can hear that, um, two people have asked us to ask the guys about a new rec center and recreation. What, you would like to see it approved, what you wanted to see it cause, how it would be like? And may or why is it two people?
I think that a new, an addition to the rec center that we have certainly would be the most appropriate improvement. I think that, I've been amazed. We, a few years ago, put a, I don't know how many million dollar addition on to the hospital. They're gonna build a new clinic now. We did Celebration Park, the community did. If the community wants this rec addition, the community will step up and pay for a lot of it out of their own pockets. I'm, I certainly wouldn't lie astride in the path of that new recreation facility. I think that anything we can do to get the citizens and their children to spend more time together is a hundred percent positive for our community. I think that the things that should be in it, I think I'll leave that to the rec department. One thing I've not done in the last twenty-seven years is micromanage. I don't believe in that. I have tremendous commissions and departments. And I think that given the opportunity to look into expanding the rec department, the recreation department will do a fantastic job of letting the citizens what they think is the appropriate thing to have in there.
I've had the opportunity to actually take part in some of the meetings that have taken place over the last couple of months regarding a new aquatic center or fitness center or whatever it is we, we end up with. There's been a group of probably twenty-five to thirty people in the community ranging from about twenty to forty or so in age, who have gotten together to discuss this exact thing. And come together with ideas and come together with different things that they've seen at other, other communities and just brainstorm of what Vinton wants and needs. We're looking at, we're talking to those people because those are the people who are gonna be having kids over the next several years and who are gonna be having their kids go through and utilize these facilities. We talked about having an indoor pool. We've talked about rock climbing walls, trail systems. I mean, if you can think of it, it's been brought up at these meetings and it's been really, really exciting. We, we talked earlier tonight about websites. We talked about internet, fiber. We've talked about all kinds of incredible progressive things. And I think that this community is, and the young people in this community are really wanting something that they can call their own, that they can take their kids to, that they can have for the future of the community. And I think that an aquatic center or an advanced rec center of whatever, whatever that might look like, I think would be a huge asset for the community. And not only for the current residents, but it will draw people into the community, which will then draw people into the schools and really, I think, can do a lot for the tax base and bringing a lot of opportunities to our community and our citizens.
Our Park Department rec center is a good, no doubt, problem. And I think that if we could add on and, but I've got a vision that that's gonna help bring people into town, more younger families. But I'd also like to look at, you know, as part of it, even like a senior center. Something to get our older generation, you know, out there also. I mean, they're, you know, we talk family, but, you know, the older population is family too. You know, it's important, you know, they use a skating rink for their walk. Why couldn't we do something, you know, like a carpeted walking area track for them? For something called Impact. You know, you gotta think as a community, how can we help our entire community? I think a rec center is a very important part of our community because when you come to a city of our size, what do you look at? What do we offer? You know, most people go to their jobs, you know? We have a great grocery store, we have a skating rink, we have, we have a lot of things in town. But what activities are there for the whole community after you're done working? Or if you're retired and you'd like to go out and just do something? It's, it's very important to, to look at the whole community as a whole and see where we can, you know, expand and help everyone.
Well, this is a topic I'm very green on. It is a needed improvement, addition, expansion, total rebuild, however you wanna look at it. It's very needed. As a citizen, I would be all for it. And I would look forward to an opportunity to be involved in helping on a steering committee or something that Brad might put together. As a councilperson, I would trust Brad and the Parks and Rec Department to bring their plans to us and help them home where we can and let them run with it where they can. But it is a needed facility. I just, it's just, I'm not sure how much involvement, other than helping them with their planning, that we as a council need to do.
I would agree with everybody. It is something that's important. But in the planning process, you know, if, if we're looking for this to help draw individuals to the community, we need to build it big enough for another two or four or five thousand people than what we have right now. I was an athlete growing up, and I'm sure it's probably still the same way. Gym time is a hot commodity. And I played school sports, and then I played extracurricular sports outside of school. And in this community, the only gyms that we had to use were the school gyms. And so we, we kinda got whatever was left over. And I think with the new rec facility, if we had four or five or six basketball courts in there, you know, a lot of these teams could have a place to go and practice and get home at a decent hour. You know, it's, it's tough when you got a sixth grade girl that's going to basketball practice until eight-thirty or nine o'clock at night. And then she's gotta come home and get homework done and stuff like that. So that's one, one thing that I think would be very beneficial to the community and for the athletes in the community, is they would, we would have more facility for those teams to actually practice and get the time in earlier in the day. But also, the citizens, we do need a larger rec facility just for wellness. Everybody getting out and exercising, going for a swim, running around an indoor track, a weight room, all of those things would be very beneficial to the community. Like Tammy said, you know, the involvement from city council. I think as you hear, I mean, we're all for it, but once again, how is it gonna happen? I mean, at this point in time, city of Vinton, I mean, we, we can't afford to just go build a three million dollar rec center. So it's gonna take a lot of group, a lot of groups working together to make something like this happen.
To add to what Zach said, I wonder in the future, does a school get involved with something like this? You look at the programs that we have now. Currently, I think we use part of Washington High School. We use the fitness equipment in there. They have a program that they use. So there, it shows that we're still lacking the proper equipment at our one facility. The skating center, who would've thought the skating center would be used for so many other activities than just skating? Yeah, we're behind on that. We have a new Park and Rec Director, and he's got a good, strong board. And we're waiting for plans for them to bring forth to us so that we can either give them marching orders or tell them to go back and find out more answers and ask more questions. Because we, nobody really knows what the actual need is for a rec facility until we find out exactly what we should have.
I think Drake Randall did a amazing job for us. And I think Brad's gonna put the bill as well. I think they have a good enough department. And if they can come up with what they need, come to the council, I think the council has a limited role. I think we can trust them.
I think Brad and the current rec ward are doing a phenomenal job. No complaints whatsoever. The new rec center, I actually just brought it up with a couple of friends of mine this weekend when we were talking about it. If the city of Vinton makes widgets, you better be the best damn widget maker in the state. So you better have the best sports facility that people can come and see. It will draw people in. I think it has to be in cooperation with the hospital, with the school. You know, we have six months out of the year athletes. Every other school are competing with us twelve months out of the year athletes. We need something to help promote that. Not only does it help promote the athletes at school and stop some of the open enrollment going out, it gives kids a positive place to go to and spend their time. It's just a better overall community thing. Can we afford it? I don't know if we can afford not to. And with the rec ward, they'll come up with plans. We just gotta figure out how we're gonna fund it. And you got a great city administrator right now that somehow has a knack to finding money where it really shouldn't be, so.
Every couple of years, somebody from Washington decides that they don't wanna fund the AmeriCorps program anymore. Uh, she says, "Every couple of years, somebody from Washington says, 'Maybe we should not fund the AmeriCorps program.'" That's said it at the plan school, that has done a lot of things for the community. What do you guys think? If they came to you and said, "AmeriCorps, what does it mean to Vinton? What does it mean to us? How would you respond to that question?"
I could not be happier that AmeriCorps is in Vinton. We have such an incredible opportunity in Vinton with two-hundred-and-forty eighteen-to-twenty-four-year-olds coming through our community for ten months at a time, twice a year. It is an absolutely amazing opportunity for our community to not only show off all the awesome things that we have, but to show them what Vinton can be and will be. I think that, uh, the, it's been great to see how they have gotten involved in the community. I see them walking down the streets and shopping in our stores. They're in economic development, God send, I think. What little money they do have, they spend downtown Vinton and at our gas stations. And I just love to see all of them in Vinton. What I hope is happening is that they are going back home all over the country and telling their friends and their family about the amazing ten months that they had in our community. Because that, to me, is the greatest marketing... Because that, to me, is the greatest marketing that we can possibly do. And if we can attract just, I mean, say five of every class that comes through our community to come back to Vinton, to live and start a family, maybe start a business. My sister-in-law actually was an AmeriCorps person years ago and she came back and she's now teaching at the high school. She's married to my brother, she's teaching as a math teacher at the high school and they're starting a family here in Vinton. Not to start rumors that they're pregnant. They have not started a family yet, so. But they came back to Vinton and it, it, the connection started literally with AmeriCorps. So I say if we lose them, we shot ourselves in the foot, so.
With AmeriCorps, what they mean to Vinton and to me, you know, after the flood, that's about when they were fired up and starting in town here, and they were out doing things. It was amazing. And they've got great people that worked there. I know that some of the staff there, they're fantastic. They seem like they're very high-quality people that are coming through our town. I've talked to a few of them, they always say, "Thank you," you know? It's, it's incredible. And for Vinton to lose something like that would just be a tragedy.
AmeriCorps is just one more way that Vinton got put on the map. On a very much higher federal level, we are on the map. And I think that's crucial. I think it's, it's, it would be irresponsible of the federal government to close a facility should that ever even be discussed again. Just because it is the perfect facility, we've had opportunity over the past eight, nine years to get to know some of the members personally and develop some relationships that way. And the uniqueness in their personalities that drives them to want to be the volunteers that they are is standout. And I know Zach will have a ton of stories as well, but they are crucial to Vinton, they are crucial to, to keeping our citizens aware of other places in the world because when they are here, when they're out shopping, everybody strikes up conversation because they're easy to identify, they have their uniforms, everyone strikes up conversation. So we learn from them and they learn from us and that's a win-win.
AmeriCorps, I have had the absolute privilege of working with probably over 20 teams. Every year, I, I actually, I fill out the paperwork and request a team to come work with my department. Sometimes we get them, sometimes we don't. Like everybody said, they're from all over the country. And just this last spring, I applied for a team and Benton County Conservation was lucky enough to get that team for a little over a month. There was 10, 10 individuals on that team and the amount of work that we got done with those 10 individuals in a month's time, it would, it would just blow your mind. And that's one valuable asset that they bring to the community is that any nonprofit organization can apply to have a team come work for them. And the amount of work that is done, I mean, it's, it's, it's free labor. If you went up to AmeriCorps right now and asked them, "What do you think of Zach Parmiter?" I hate him, he works us too hard. No, but, and the teams, when they come in, not all of them stay in the community, they go, they go all over the Midwest. But it is nice to get a team and keep them locally. And I've had the opportunity of working with FEMA Corps as well as AmeriCorps. The flash floods of 2013, I worked with a FEMA Corps team on the bike trail, which had damage from the flash flooding. And the other really, really nice thing about having them in this community is between projects, they come back to their, their central location and they're always putting feelers out into the community saying, "Hey, we've got teams back right now, can you take two or three teams for a couple of days?" Which is really nice and I've, we've, I've created a really good working relationship with them. And I think it's only going to help benefit not only the city of Vinton, but also Benton County.
I haven't really had an opportunity to work with any of these individuals, but I do know that when I'm operating through the community, I've never heard anything bad about any of the kids, which I think is a great thing. The stories I hear about how they help individuals come back and support their families here. This is our hometown and we want to, we hope our own team, we build our community, we'd love to have it so we can build some houses.
I haven't been around them that much either, just a few times off the park. And most of them seem like pretty good kids. There has been a few bad outlaws in town and there's a little bit of negativity about them. And maybe everybody's a little more optimistic than I am. That's all I think.
Well, I know the BBRD has benefited greatly from having AmeriCorps here. I see Brian out working up every chance he gets when he comes in town. Yeah, I read in the, it said that they were thinking about cutting some of their funding and cutting their funding will probably come out of Vinton first. And I think it's important that the council and the city to get together and start, you know, contact or get ahold of the senators and make sure that that doesn't happen. Because if we don't chase up the top where it started, we're not going to have them here. It's a great asset and they are, everybody's right. You, they go out, where are you from? Lower Station, no word of Vinton. Just that one word, Vinton, Vinton, Vinton. And the more it gets out, the more people here, the more they want to come here to see what's going on. Lose them, that's really not acceptable. So we've got to do what we can to protect them. Need to figure out how they get a safe route down to McDonald's now 218 instead of walking across the bridge. I mean, we need to engage them and find out what we can do to help them, to make things better here for them to stay. Put them in a walk, bridge, cross, angle three, whatever page, we've got to keep them safe. Bud, we applied for a 218 walk bridge and it's in the works. I've had an extreme pleasure of representing the city of Vinton at every, as a welcoming committee for every class since they've started here. I have a great time with them, I'm an honor member. I believe that AmeriCorps is probably something that every young person that doesn't go to the military or doesn't go to college should maybe aspire to try and join an AmeriCorps group. I've worked with them on many, many, as a matter of fact, I worked with Zach and them out to the park. I had worked with them the last two times at the animal shelter was paid, I worked with them. Down along the Sea River, when we cleaned Sea River, I worked with them. And I've not had a mishap with any of those folks. I think that they're good, the majority of them. And I, like always, when you get 240 young people together, you're going to have a bad outlaw too, no doubt. And, but AmeriCorps has some very strict regulations on, on what they do on their off-hours and if they break those regulations, they're gone. And I have actually known a couple of them that have to be sent home. It happens, but the 99% of the time, AmeriCorps has been fantastic. I've pledged to, to AmeriCorps that I would represent them and speak highly of them if it came up tonight and truly, I think that it's been an extreme benefit to our community. I think they're a very good asset to the nation as a whole. So I hope, every night or every time I have a, a closing statement for AmeriCorps when I greet them, I tell them that if they're ever in trouble, go up and knock on any citizen's door, tell them that they're an AmeriCorps person and could they be helped? And I tell them that I think nine times out of 10, they're going to get help.
We have one more question, but thank you all for coming. If you have any more questions, we're going to be doing stories about the election, contact us, we'll ask the questions on our future stories, whatever. Our last question is to basically give them a chance to summarize, give us a closing remark, and also to give them a chance to answer any questions we didn't ask. So, we forgot to ask you something, you really wanted to talk about last week. Can you, can you throw that? Okay, this is your last question, it's coming and two parts, we just, we have a remark, you know, like about my question, etc. If we, yeah, we did not ask a question, we wanted to answer if there's something you wanted to talk about, I'm glad of that. And thank you.
I'd like to thank Ian for having us and, and today. Um, it's been kind of exciting to run for your city council. You know, I've got to talk to a lot of great people and listen to a lot of great ideas. You know, I guess my whole plan is to see where Vinton can be, not just two years down the road, four years down the road, but down the long haul, 20 years down the road. And Vinton is a great community. We've got a great hospital, we've got a great school, we've got so much going for us and I don't know why nobody's seen it yet. So we're going to shine. I think the town is going to shine, I think we're moving in a great direction. We've got a great police chief, a great city coordinator, a great parks guy. We're, we're, our head departments are, are changing and they're growing, I think they're, they're going in the right direction. I feel like the town is, is ready to go.
Well, I'd just like you all to think about why you came tonight, whatever various different reasons you all might have. I would like you to go home and find other ways to get involved in the community. And if you don't have time to get involved in additional things, then I would encourage all of you to follow up with us. Follow up on everything that's, we've talked about tonight and, and keep track of us and, and just look for ways to, to be involved and, and help us grow and keep moving forward.
I would just like to say thank you all for coming. I'd actually hope to see a lot more of the citizens here tonight. Unfortunately, that didn't happen. I am running unopposed, I'd actually kind of hoped that someone would run against me, just that fighting spirit. But I will do everything in my power to make sure that this community continues to move forward. Sometimes it might not seem like we're trying to do that. And I just ask that you all remember that we do get a lot of information thrown at us. One thing, for example, our waste water infrastructure throughout the community. When somebody comes to you and says, "Hey, look, we got a problem." It could cost $20 million over the next 15 to 30 years to fix this problem. It's not something anybody here wants to hear. And it kind of, I'm not going to say it does, but it kind of pulls the ropes in on anything else that we're doing because hey, I mean, that's an important thing, we've got to make sure that stuff keeps going that way, you know? And so we kind of have to pull the reins in on other things until we know how much money we are going to have to spend on a project like that, replacing and fixing our infrastructure that we currently have. I know, you know, Tammy and Chris, fellow council members, these two are engaged, these two are very engaged and they're here for you. So, and I am as well, just remember that. If you have questions, concerns, please come to a council meeting. Thank you.
So we got a phone call, this kid named Nate Hesse. He called me up and he says, "Hey, I'm, I'm, I'm really thinking about running for city council and we do live in St. Warren." I said, "Great." He says, "Well, I was kind of trying to get some feedback, are you going to get upset about it?" "No, why would we be upset about it? We both have the same common goal, we want to make our community better." Is one better than the other? Well, it'd be important, no. But no, we both want the community to grow. And I wish them luck. And there's a lot of decisions that are coming soon and they have to be made. And it's, it's going to be, it's going to be an interesting upcoming year, so. Thank you all for coming and like Zach said, please come to council meeting. We get the same four people every week and, you know, they bring cookies to us just to keep us entertained. But your inputs, come and have something that you, that's bugging you, so, you know, to be involved is, is, that's awesome when we see this many people tonight that are concerned and involved in our community. Thank you.
I don't think there's a bad choice up here. I think everyone here has, Vinton is the best it is. I, I know I, I do and, uh, there's a lot of things, I'm kind of more prudentialy. Maybe the cat thing isn't a big issue with me. Things have importance and I think that's where things need to lie, where you can most follow us.
When the third ward opened up nine years ago, I had a Thursday night open, I thought, hell, I'll give it a shot. And it just kind of grows and you get the passion for it, you can't ever get out of it. I run the same circles as half the people out there, I'll go to soccer games. Hey Bud, guess what happened to the council the other night? And I'm like, well, super, what's the answer, you know, maybe we discuss, I never get very far with it. Coming up through council, I tried to base my decisions on what's going to be best for my kids when I get to be my age, what's going to make them stay here? And to become mayor, I'm going to make sure that everybody's kids want to stay here, so that they can grow, to make it a family, a community, because that's what we are. We're stuck inside this little city limits and we can't go anywhere because we're, we all chose to live here. We want to make sure that we all gain together. We don't want to have the Hunger Games of factions sticking out there. We need to all come together and be a community. And doing that will succeed. Everybody's passionate up here. Let them share your passion, you guys are passionate, that's why you're here. Be passionate together. And Vinton is a true growth. Well, I'd like to thank you all for coming tonight and just listening to these folks talking about it has inspired me all over again. When I started, I don't know how many years it's been, 20-something, I came to figure out why they fixed roads and paved them the way they did and I never left. In the future, I think that we're going to have some extremely hard decisions to make the next couple of years, even. I think that any one of these folks up here will do a tremendous job. As Bud and all of the people have said, we're all very, very interested in making Vinton the best place to live and have a family. I personally have maybe spent way too many hours talking and doing the things that I do, but we all have our own way of doing and handling the position. So if you give me an opportunity to work for you for another two years, I will spend all the time it takes, as I always have. There's not one person up here that I'm not extremely proud of to say that I have some time worked with and I will continue to work with at any time. I think that for us to have one of these type of meetings so that you can all learn how your representatives feel and have us get up and explain some of the things that we have tonight is fantastic. And, but when it comes to is Vinton a shining star? We're already a shining star, but what we need to do now is make it a brighter star. And I think that over the last 20 years, whether we have followed a specific plan or not, I think we have in fact moved forward as a community. I think that our community is a fantastic place and I think all of you here are the reason why. It isn't just one of us, but all of us. So above everything else, please go out and vote and tell all your friends to vote. I'd like to hear on the number four that a thousand or 1,200 people voted, not just four or five. So let's move that thought this time and thank you again.
I get the last word. I, I appreciated the advice that Chris did give me when I called him probably a month ago now. We had a nice talk and he was encouraging and that, that was part of... We had a nice talk, and he was encouraging, and that, that was part of the reason that I ran. But because he, he didn't only encourage me to run, because it's a great opportunity to get involved, but because he, he thinks that it's a, a way to move the community forward, and a unique way to get the community moved forward, and I'm so excited to be a part of that. I've gotten a taste of that through my work at Vinton Unlimited. I've continued to be able to stay involved in the community over the years through VOG and, and other organizations that I've been a part of, and I'm excited to continue. We have incredible opportunities in front of us, and I think we need to work on taking advantage of those opportunities and investing in the future of, of Vinton. I've got a four-year-old and a five-year-old, and they are, I'm going to raise them here forever. I hope they stick around. We've got a community college they can go to, they really don't have to leave. Nobody really has to leave. I, other than going to Iowa City for a specialist appointment for my son yesterday, I cannot remember literally the last time in probably two months that I've had to leave Vinton to get something that wasn't already here. So, and that's all because of the work that the city council's done, and the community as a whole has done. And so I thank all of you for that, and for showing up tonight. I hope you get out and vote on November third, and the way it started tonight was about iVinton, and November third, you have an opportunity to, to vote yes for iVinton and the future of our community. So thank you all very much for coming out, and November third, get out there.
Thanks very much, Zach.